Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm over here in the corner. It's great to see you all tonight. Thank you so much for being here at our last in our series of three debates. This one featuring our at-large candidates. I'm not going to take up too much time. I just want you to know that I'm really grateful that you showed up tonight to be a part of this. My name is Nathan. I live here in the neighborhood just over there on the corner. I work here in this building. My kids are involved in Inglewood Schools. My wife is involved with a DAC Committee with Maddox. I serve on the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood. I'm a police chaplain. I care deeply about the city. I care a lot about the future of this city, not just for our sake, but for the sake of our children. So it's important to me that you're here. It's important to me that we're doing this. Thank you, candidates, for being here. This is, hopefully, a good use of your time and a good use of your time. I think it's a great way for us to hear what these candidates are all about, what they care about, what they want to see for this community, okay? And it's also a good time for us to hear a little bit about what you care about, okay? So what we're going to do throughout the evening is, for most of the time, we're going to keep this one slide up on the screen that gives you an opportunity to text in questions that you have. It's a really simple way for you to text in a question. I get them up here on my computer, and I can kind of sort through them. If you don't have a way to text in, come up here and talk with me, and I can tell you how we can get something else worked out. But that's the preferable way to do it. Helps me keep things organized. We're going to get through as many questions tonight as we possibly can, but we want to respect your time and the time of the candidates as well. So we're going to try to wrap up just a few minutes after seven. If questions are similar, I'll try to combine them. So if you don't hear your question asked verbatim, it might be because I tried to put it in with another question, okay? But in the end, I'm going to do my best to make sure these candidates get to hear from you as much as possible. They are available throughout their campaign, obviously, to continue these conversations. They'll be available afterwards this evening to chat with you if you have any questions beyond what you already asked, or if you don't feel like they adequately answered the question that you asked. I'm going to do my best also to keep the conversation moving. If I feel like a candidate didn't really answer the question that was asked of them, I'm going to push them and ask them to try again. If they're so inclined, they're welcome and encouraged to debate each other, to disagree with each other, and I'll be moderating that as best I can from this position, okay? So thank you again for being here. I think this is just a really important part of educating the Inglewood electorate. So thanks again. We're going to begin with stump speeches. We're going to give each of these candidates a minute or two to talk about what they believe in, what they care about, and then we're going to go from there to a couple of prepared questions that they've seen in advance that will hopefully prime the pump for you to be thinking about good questions for them. And then we'll go to your questions, and we'll spend the majority of the time there, okay? So we're going to begin... Oh, I should clarify. Maybe you all know this, but there are actually two seats available in this at-large election for this particular cycle, okay? So that's unique from the other debates that we're doing where we did. So District 3 had one seat, District 1 had one seat. This one, there are two seats available. And Rita Russell is our incumbent, and she's going to begin with her stump speech. Thanks, Rita.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight and participating to find out more about your local government. I want to thank Pastor Hoag and Sacred Grace Church for hosting this debate and providing this opportunity. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up in Inglewood. My parents moved here when I was five years old, and I went through the Inglewood School System, graduated from Inglewood High School, and I've lived here most of my life, spent two years in Germany with my husband, and I think we lived out by Southwest Plaza for 10 years also. Other than that, I have lived here. Like a lot of you, and maybe I'm not even like a lot of you because I never came to any political debates. I really never paid attention to what was going on in this city until about six years ago. I just thought, oh, City Council's taking care of everything for us. And all of a sudden, there were a couple of things that happened that prompted me to call the mayor and some council members, and they really kind of dismissed me. And so I went to a council meeting, and I saw other people being dismissed when they would come forward for public speaking. As a matter of fact, there was this one woman who came to speak, and some of the council members went after her and said, "Where are you getting that information?" And they really dismissed everything she said. They were disrespectful to her. She was close to 80 years old. And I'll tell you what, that's the first time I ever... The next council meeting, I came back and I gave a speech, and I had documentation of everything that the council members said and what they did, and they stood up and took notice. But I was frustrated that the citizens were not being listened to. And so my number-one goal has been to make sure that your voices are heard. And to that end, I have hosted town hall meetings and coffees with Rita on a regular basis because I want to hear from you. And you all can email me to get on my contact list and find out when these meetings are. You can go on the city website and find that out because it is important to me that I represent what is in your best interest. And the truth is, we as citizens need to start speaking up to council so council will know what it is that we want. And so I have done that. I will continue to do that. And I just want to thank you all for coming out. Thank you so much, Nathan.
Thank you, Rita. Steve, we're going to go to you.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and thanks to Nathan and Sacred Grace for hosting this event. I believe civic engagement is an important part of the Inglewood experience. I've been a resident of Inglewood since 2011, when I bought my house just across the street from Clayton Elementary School. And from pretty much the first day in Inglewood, I have been active in one way or another. I served on what was then the Liquor and Medical Marijuana Licensing Authority for two years, and then after I left that board, I joined what is now the Budget Advisory Committee. And it was a newly formed board at the time, and I am the last remaining charter member of that board currently. During that time, serving on the Budget Advisory Committee, I've come to understand the city's budget pretty well. And I have recently come to the conclusion that a lot of the challenges that Inglewood is facing are connected directly to the decisions that we're making relative to the city's budget. Inglewood, in my opinion, is trying to do too much with too little. If you look around at other area municipalities, you will see that the people in those municipalities are members of special districts. An example is the South Suburban Parks and Recreation District. Another would be the Arapahoe Library District. And the third big district is the South Metro Fire Rescue District. Those people pay property taxes to those districts to provide a service. All of those services that people in other cities are paying special taxes for are provided to you by the City of Inglewood with just the taxes that the city collects. I think it's time, based upon a lot of our issues with infrastructure, to have a conversation with the citizens about how we manage our infrastructure. How do we provide services? How many services do we provide? How much do we expect those services to cost? I'm running because I am focused on the cities, not just the cities present, not just managing the budget this year, but managing the budget five years into the future, 10 years into the future, creating a model that is sustainable for the generation that lives in Inglewood after me. Part of that is developing relationships with other people in the city. During my time on the Budget Advisory Committee, I've worked with innumerable city council members, three finance directors, and three city managers. I've built relationships with those people. I'm ready to start from day one, and I hope that you'll give me your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. John, you're up.
Hey, everybody. Thank you, Nathan, Sacred Grace, and thank you all for being here. Thank you for engaging in democracy, especially when it's going to get crazy cold out tonight. So I appreciate you being here. My name is John Stone. I'm running for Inglewood City Council at-large. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I became homeless when I was 15 years old, and I lived on the streets until I was nearly 21. And I got off the streets because I got a good skilled trades job as a carpenter. Now, I worked the entire time that I was homeless, often two or three jobs, but it wasn't until I got a good job with real benefits, with real wages, that I was able to get off the streets. I moved here in November of 2008 as a high school dropout and got accepted to MSU and did not know that I needed a high school diploma to go to college. So I scrambled to get my GED about a month later. And January of 2009, I started my bachelor's degree. I'm now finishing a master's degree at CU Denver, and I'm now a small business owner here in Inglewood, and it is Inglewood that gave me those opportunities. And I want to make sure that Inglewood stays the kind of place that gives people the kind of opportunities that I had, that I never would have had if I had stayed where I come from, that I never would have had in most of the cities, I think, in my opinion, in the greater Denver metro area. Part of that means that we need to update this infrastructure. You're going to hear a lot about infrastructure tonight. We heard a lot about it Saturday at the last debate that we were all at together. We need to update our infrastructure. Most of it is over 20 years old, or all of it is over 20 years old, and most of it is getting close to 100 years. So we need to do something about that. Next, we need to do something about what's happening in housing. We're going to talk about that a lot tonight as well, but we're creating a situation here in Inglewood that's not good for the people who already live here, and it's not good for the people who want to live here that come from modest means like myself. You know, I'm a working-class guy, and there is not a single home that I could buy in this city right now. And I'm a business owner, you know? And I live with my girlfriend, who just moved in about a month ago, and another adult human that I am not in a relationship with. And it's just crazy that that's what it takes for me to be able to rent a 30-year-old two-bedroom apartment in Inglewood. And finally, we've got a growing homeless population here in Inglewood, largely due to things outside of Inglewood's control, namely Denver. Not to point fingers, but I will. And we're going to have to do something about it. And I don't necessarily think that we need to spend public funds to do something about it, but I do think that we need to have a public effort in order to do something about it. And so that's why, in all of the free time that I have right now, outside of campaigning and working full-time and running a small business, I'm also working on starting a small foundation to get the 40% to 50% of the homeless in the Denver metro area who work two or more jobs already into skilled trades like I worked in that have real pay, real benefits, and a real opportunity to get them off the streets. So I hope that I can earn your vote tonight, and I really appreciate you being here again. And I'll close with that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right. Now, we're going to shift gears into some questions that these candidates have already seen before. So I'm going to read them just as they are on the paper that they have in front of them. But while they're doing this, this is a good opportunity for you to be thinking questions that you'd like to ask them and to be texting those in. The information for doing so is on the screen. All right. Rita, we're going to begin with you. Here's your question. "Inglewood is home to a popular process of scraping small historic homes and replacing them with new, large, and expensive multi-unit housing. This shift in real estate impacts those of us who live here, including you. What are your thoughts on this shift, and what can council do to curb it or encourage it?"
Thank you. This process was actually created by a previous city council. It has been driven by developers who were interested in cashing in on the increased growth in the metro area. Previous councils passed policies that enable the transformation of our historic neighborhoods that we are seeing today. This shift in real estate has impacted the affordability of homes in the area and has increased the amount of property tax that homeowners have to pay for their existing homes, which is especially burdensome on the elderly citizens who are living on a fixed income. It creates quality-of-life issues for the rest of us, privacy issues, sunlight, deprivation, et cetera. It is also putting a burden on our existing infrastructure that was built decades ago to sustain smaller homes. This process is one of the major complaints I hear from citizens, homes being built next door that are not in the character of the existing neighborhood. Citizens feel the city is favoring the developers over the existing homeowners. Although I am not anti-growth, I believe we need to be smart about redeveloping our neighborhoods. We must address our aging infrastructure before we increase any more density, which includes not only the storm sewers, but also the water and sewer delivery systems. City Council has already been discussing storm-water drainage system and will continue the discussion at the October 28 study session. City Council will also be discussing the bulk plane at the October 28 study session. Reducing the bulk plane from 17 feet back to 12 feet, as it was prior to 2015, will reduce the massive size of the redevelopment that is going on in our city."
Got about 20 seconds.
One thing... What City Council can do? City Council should consider reversing some of the policies of the previous councils. We should consider declaring a moratorium on all new building until we have a plan in place to systematically repair or replace our aging infrastructure. We need to institute impact fees so that the developers pay for redevelopment, and we need to reduce the bulk plane to 12 feet, as it was prior to 2015.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The next question goes to you, Steve. I want to remind the candidates that you do have the opportunity for rebuttal or an agreement or to add to, indicate that towards me, and then we'll give you the opportunity afterwards. Steve, this question goes to you. "Last year, there was a tragic flood in our city. What can council do to make sure that Inglewood homeowners don't suffer that much property or life damage in the future if a storm like that comes along again?"
This is a really challenging issue that does not have a simple answer. I think one of the ways to mitigate losses from a flood is to purchase flood insurance. So I'll just say that outright. But beyond that, we have massive investment that we need to make in our infrastructure. That's going to involve ratepayers paying fees to pay for that infrastructure. We are today reaping the rewards of policies of councils passed not to increase rates. We need to pay to put the infrastructure in. That's storm pipes. To carry stormwater away, that's detention downstream to hold water so that it can trickle slower into the system. But we also need to pay to maintain that system once it's installed, and that is where the city failed previously. It would appear that we were not appropriately inspecting or maintaining those pipes. There are a number of pipes throughout the city that are crumbling. This is not a solution that comes for free. It costs money, and we need to study it in order to develop a thoughtful process for fixing the problem. What council does? Council has already offered a few things to the citizens who are affected by flooding. One of those was assistance with making improvements to the property to mitigate flood damage. I support that. But the problem itself is greater than just building a retaining wall or raising your property or a number of other solutions that are short-term solutions. This is a long-term problem that requires a long-term solution.
Thank you, Steve. Next question goes to John. John, there has been recently a lot of talk about planning... Sorry. Talk and planning around redevelopment and revitalization along South Broadway and the city center area. For many Inglewood residents, those words sound a lot like gentrification and higher rent. What are your thoughts on this redevelopment, and how do you think that it will impact the residents of Inglewood? You have two minutes.
So I think that right now, we're already experiencing rapidly increasing rents and property tax rates. And as the Mayor Protem mentioned, this does disproportionately affect older folks, but it also disproportionately impacts folks who are trying to start a life and start a family and buy properties so that they can live in a community that they want to live in. It's both the young and the old that are impacted by these issues. And I think the key driver in this is actually the scrapes and replacements with duplexes and triplexes. The city center redevelopment, as of right now, at least as of the city council meeting on Monday, is only going to be addressed to the city property, which is essentially the RTD light rail parking on both sides of the city center and the parking between the privately-owned commercial and residential areas just up the street from it. I'm not on city council as of right now, so I won't talk too much about that, but I'm not sure how that would really make that much of an impact since the people who own the private property around it don't seem to want to redevelop at this time, at least as far as I understood from the study session on Monday. Now, when it comes to South Broadway, we've got some really rundown properties on South Broadway. We've got a lot of vacancies on South Broadway. We're not bringing in our potential for sales tax, which is the number-one way that our city brings in revenue outside of property taxes, and we need that sales tax revenue in order to be able to fund our city functions. And if we can bring more locally-owned small businesses into that area, I think that would be a boon to our city and help us cover some of the outsized costs that we're looking at right now in fixing our infrastructure.
Thank you, John. All right, folks. Now, we're going to transition to some of your questions so that they can begin to answer those, so that this is where they're going to have to think on their feet. Please continue to text those questions in. I have quite a few up here, and I appreciate them. Just really quickly, want to clarify, please make sure your question is actually a question, not a statement, meaning it should end in a question mark, just so that I know how to read it. It's also helpful if you're clear on whether or not you want all the candidates to answer this or one particular candidate, okay? So for instance, this first question that I'm going to ask goes to you, Steve. It's a two-part question, and it has to do with our taxes. So the question is this: What should we focus on with our taxes? By "we," I believe I mean the City of Inglewood. The second part of the question is: Is there a cost-benefit analysis for Inglewood taxes that you know of? Could you tell us a little bit about that? You have two minutes.
Sorry. I just wanted to make sure I captured the question. What do we focus on with the taxes? I think the number-one focus of taxes is public safety, things that contribute to the well-being of the city, police and fire, number one. The second thing that we should use our taxes on is other safety infrastructure, roads, bridges, you know, buildings, city buildings, things like that, that are necessary to provide for the citizens. The third thing that we spend taxes on, I believe, that's important, is operation of the city. So paying staff, amenities like libraries and parks, the Museum of Outdoor Arts, those things. So those are what we do with our taxes. As far as the cost-benefit, that's where you all to determine, I believe. If you want to elect people that are going to invest your money in a way that you agree with, that's exactly what you should do. So when I tell you that my number-one priority is public safety and caring about Inglewood's future and handling infrastructure, if you agree with that and you understand that that may come with some cost, you should vote for me. I can't, as a member of council, if I was sitting on that council, I would not be allowed to just raise your taxes. Tabor prohibits that. So whatever tax policy council comes up with, it's to you, the citizens, to decide on whether or not you want to agree with that tax policy. And the cost-benefit analysis, I think our staff does that every year. As far as it being worded as a cost-benefit analysis, I've never seen one directly worded that way, but we have to make difficult decisions on an annual basis. This year in March, staff presented $15 million in capital improvements to council. Council approved about $7 million of those. So there's your cost-benefit right there.
Steve, thank you. Appreciate answering that question. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, cool, cool, cool. This next question here... Steve, I actually want to ask you a clarifying question, if you don't mind. You said something in your opening statement and your stump speech... Thank you very much. About Arapahoe County, or a county system, rather, paying for some of the things that you just mentioned you would prioritize for our tax base to be paying for. Can you explain to me what you mean by the difference between those two things and maybe give us a little bit more understanding of how you would make a transition as a council person, or as the council could, towards a county-sponsored system on those particular things? Thank you.
Sure. So what I was making reference to is not county services so much as services from what are called special districts. A special district is a government entity that exists to provide services to a specific geographic area. Examples include the Arapahoe Library District, the South Metro Fire Protection District, and the South Suburban Parks and Recreation District. I use those as examples because those examples are the districts that surround Inglewood closest. So I believe Inglewood has a few choices. We can decide to invest in our facilities and our land. Perhaps investing in added parks infrastructure would be one example of that. We also have the option, if the voters want to do this, to sever some of the city assets into those special districts. That's not an option that I favor. I like Inglewood's unique community identity, but I also believe that we're facing some serious challenges managing those assets right now, and so there's an option on the table that we could potentially solve that problem of managing those assets. It's one less thing for the city to manage, but it costs you a sizable amount more.
Thank you for clarifying that. You have a response? Rita, go ahead. You have one minute.
I disagree with the one point that Mr. Ward made, and that is, it would substantially increase your taxes because if you think that the city's going to give you back the money that you're already giving to the city, they're not. And so any special districts that are created would increase your taxes substantially. Thank you.
You may, Stephen. Thank you, Rita.
I'm pretty sure that's exactly what I said. So I'm not sure what Rita's disagreeing with. I said that a special district would substantially increase your taxes.
Thank you.
I did hear him make one statement that partially agreed with that, but I just... I think that I do agree with everything else that he said, just that we need to be careful about creating special districts. He's the one that brought up creating special districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to switch now to something related to infrastructure, but it does have a very specific application. The question is to all candidates. John, we're going to start with you. The question says, "Why should flood victims be burdened with the cost of flood insurance when the city did not maintain their current infrastructure?" John, two minutes.
That's real easy for me. They shouldn't. I think it's absolutely absurd that we're asking people to buy flood insurance when they have lived in a house for 40 or 50 years that was not in a flood plain when they bought it. I think that we need to update our infrastructure and that we need to make sure that that is no longer an issue that these folks are facing to the best of our ability. But I agree with Steve in that it is going to cost money to do that. So we need to be prepared to foot the bill for upgrading and updating our infrastructure to make sure that people are not suffering the consequences of our inability to maintain our infrastructure.
Question is to all candidates. I'm going to ask, actually, each of you to respond to the question. You may include a response to your opponent in your response to the question. Go ahead.
Flood insurance, if you are a victim of a flood, is the one thing you can do right now to mitigate your future loss. It costs money to buy flood insurance, obviously. I believe the last city study was about $300 a year for flood insurance on the most recent report I saw. So while it's an added burden, I don't think that it's fair to burden all the taxpayers in the city with your bill when the property that you own and profit from floods. So that's my perspective on the matter.
Rita? Happy to repeat the question if you need it.
Will you please?
Yes. The question is, "Why should flood victims be burdened with the cost of flood insurance when the city did not maintain their current infrastructure?"
Thank you. I absolutely agree that citizens should not be responsible if the city has failed to maintain the infrastructure. The city's failure to do that is a responsibility of the entire city. Unfortunately, taxpayers are going to pay that bill. But the problem is, we are looking at fixing one section, the South Inglewood Basin, and life and safety is the number-one priority, and all of the sewer drains have been neglected, but that one needs to be addressed first. And I am all about being responsible. Council has already looked at perhaps proposing $45 million just to fix two sections of the South Basin. That is way overspending when we have so many other infrastructure. We need to start out with fixing the current problems that we have and then go back and reassess. But there have been studies done, and we have done nothing to correct those problems that were studied in '99 and in 2002. We need to go back and fix the problems. That is our responsibility. And I personally believe the city should buy the six houses, two on both sides of Akoma and two of them on Bannock, because they know that there has been known problems there in the past. And so I believe the city should purchase those homes and perhaps just put a drainage area just in those few house areas.
Thank you, Rita. Did you have a response, Steve? That's okay. Rita, I'd actually like to ask you a clarifying question while you're thinking of that. So being the incumbent, so being on city council, my question to you is, if you think it's the city's responsibility, why is it now the city's responsibility, and why wasn't it the city's responsibility until there was a flood?
It was the city's responsibility before, and the city neglected to take care of it, and that's why that we find ourselves in this position. Had we fixed the problem back in 1999, when they did that study, the cost would have been a lot less than it is now. And those dollars... been a lot less than it is now, and those dollars that year, it was quite a bit, but it's far more looming now. So, it was the city's responsibility altogether, and I will be real honest with you. I had heard right after the flood, within two weeks from several different locations, I have not been able to verify this, that people had died in that same house in the same way, back in the '60s and also in the '80s, and if that was true, I believe that the city should buy out those houses immediately and buy them at market value the day before the flood. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. All right, we're going to move on to the, yeah, please, go ahead. You have one minute.
I thought John was going to go, so I wanted to yield. I would be willing to entertain the idea of purchasing those six houses, just for the record. I believe that it's very likely that there was a mistake made when those houses were allowed to be placed there in the floodplain. But on the subject of the previous studies, '99 and 2002, this is 2019. First of all, things have changed since 1999, but secondly, I don't really have any interest in adjudicating what did or did not happen between 1999 and 2019. What I'm interested in doing is moving forward for a better Inglewood in the future. So, floodplain investment is a great idea. Let's fix our storm system, and let's do it once. That means big cost.
Thank you, Steve. All right. This next question, we're going to shift gears again here. This goes to John. John, how would you attract businesses to the small aging buildings on Broadway south of Hamden? Particularly, this question asks about those areas that lack street parking. You have two minutes.
Yeah, that's a really, really good question that I've been kind of wrestling with for a while now, because that's part of the problem. That's part of why we're having a depressed sales tax income. It's part of the reason that, you know, not to go into like political or economic theory too heavily, but, you know, when you have an area that's got abandoned storefronts and stuff like that, it leads to more abandoned storefronts, because people don't want their businesses next to empty buildings, because they attract, you know, just mischief, if you will. So, we need to do something, and we need to make Inglewood a lot more walkable. I think that if we could, and this is going to go back to the initial question that I was asked about gentrification, I think that if we could maintain the frontage of these places and get mixed use, both commercial and residential, put into those places, maintaining the character of the facades of the buildings, similar to the way that maybe downtown Littleton did, but revamping the insides of those buildings, bringing in people that are interested in bringing in new business, and then also streamlining the process to starting a business in Inglewood, because I've talked to a number of business owners here who have told me that it's incredibly difficult and incredibly time-consuming to start a business, to get all of the licensing. An example of this is the Turkish restaurant, Bosporus. Melisengili owns Bosporus. He's an Inglewood resident. He wanted to enrich his community with this beautiful restaurant. He'd secured a lease on Broadway, and it took nine months to get the proper licenses to open that restaurant, and by the time he did so, somebody had taken his lease, and he's now off of Downing in a very, very cozy, tiny little building. And it's always packed, and it'd be doing a whole lot more business if he had 10 more tables, and he would have had 10 more tables if it hadn't taken nine months to get the right licenses and to be able to open his business. So, I want to streamline that process. The Barn House Tap is another good example. How am I on time? Cool.
If you could wrap that up. Thanks for catching me on that.
The Barn House Tap, I felt like I'd been talking for a while. Sorry.
Five minutes? No, I'm kidding. Yeah, go ahead and wrap up, please.
All right. So, the Barn House Tap opened with a business model of having food trucks come by every Friday and Saturday. They didn't want to provide food inside, they wanted to provide beer inside, and then you'd be able to go out and try a different food truck every weekend, except that we don't recognize anyone else's food licensing. And so, the first three months that they were there, they were unable to have food trucks, is my understanding. There might have been one or two in that three months, but it wasn't every weekend, because we don't recognize anyone else's food safety certifications, even though it's a statewide standard. So, if we can recognize other municipalities' certifications, that might be a really good idea.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm going to switch over here to biogas. We can come back to businesses and stimulating economic growth in Inglewood. There's a couple of questions here about biogas, and I'm going to ask the broadest one, but what I'd like to do is, I'd like for whoever the first candidate is to answer this question, if you would please give us an idea of what we're talking about when it comes to biogas in Inglewood, okay? So, educate us a little bit, okay? You can have a couple of extra seconds to do that, and then you'll have two minutes to respond to this question. So, and this will be a free-for-all, whoever wants to jump in first. What is your opinion on spending on biogas? Who wants it? Steve, give us a little education and then jump into answering the question, please. Thank you.
Biogas is basically natural gas. There are processes in industrial plants, namely the sewage treatment plant in Inglewood, that produce methane, which is combustible gas. The biogas project captures that gas for sale to other places rather than venting it to the atmosphere or burning it off as waste. So, that's an explanation.
Question? I answered a question, sorry. What is your opinion on spending on biogas? That was a great synopsis. Thank you.
When I heard about the biogas plant, I was indifferent to the matter. Frankly, I didn't have an opinion, yes or no, but generally speaking, I've done a fair amount of personal research on alternative fuels, and it's occurred to me since the plant went in that it's better, in my opinion, to capture that gas and put it to some usable purpose, rather than venting it to the atmosphere or combusting it directly to the atmosphere. The city spent about $8 million of our share of the sewer treatment plant reserves building that plant. It depreciated a sizable portion of those reserves, but it was based on a citizen-initiated project. The citizens came to council and said they wanted this, and it was built in cooperation with our co-owner, Littleton, and I believe it has great potential to be an asset for the city in the future.
Would you repeat the question?
The question is, that's okay. The question is, what is your opinion on spending on biogas?
Okay, I voted no on the biogas project, and I will tell you why. The biogas is not just being converted. We are building the $8 million, and our share of the $8 million was $4 million. They are building an infrastructure to convert that so it is burnable gas. This whole thing was based on the futures market, because there are renewable energy credits that we are getting, and at this point, we have only recaptured $1 million of the $4 million we spent. The RINs, or the renewable energy credits, are scheduled to go away in 2022. If that happens, we will never recover the $4 million that we spent, and I voted no because it was a gamble, and if we can't clean up our gas good enough for XL Energy to take it, they're not going to take it, and we'll still have a big infrastructure problem that we spent money for that we can't use. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. John, the question goes to you. What is your opinion on spending on biogas?
So, if it had actually netted some benefit, I'd be all for it. If it's not going to benefit us, then I don't see a point in spending a whole bunch of money on it. However, just because the energy credits are slated to go away doesn't mean that they're actually going to go away. They could be renewed, and if they are renewed, then it's going to be a great source of income for the city, and it's definitely better than just burning it into the atmosphere. If we're going to burn it in the atmosphere, that seems like a pretty awful waste of time and literally energy, so.
Rita, go ahead.
One thing I forgot to say is, there was a company out there that was willing to take all the risk and produce the infrastructure for us. We wouldn't, we just wouldn't have made as much money. So, we are gambling that we're going to make money, and if we don't, and you don't know that until it's all over with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Steve, would you like to respond? You have one minute.
So, first of all, thank you, Rita, for correcting my numbers. I pride myself on having correct numbers. I failed on that one. $8 million. I appreciate it. Secondly, the gamble, yes. Yeah, it was a gamble, and we probably could have put that plant in under the private-sector partnership. It's one example of where a partnership with the private sector may have benefited Inglewood, because it would have transferred some of the risk of building this plant to the private sector. However, that doesn't mean, even if we don't make a dime on this project, that it doesn't have some benefit to the city. Capturing a usable commodity and pushing it to the market rather than just sending it to waste, I believe is a publicly beneficial project.
Thanks, Steve. Rita? Go ahead. You have one minute to respond.
Just one quick thing. The problem is, Inglewood didn't have any extra money. We have gone $4 million into debt, and your sewer bills are going to go up. We are doing a rate study to figure out how much. We know the storm sewer is going up, so it is going to cost more money because of that $4 million, and when we've got other things that need to be fixed, I think it was putting that $4 million to a wrong use. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, yep, this is going to be our last go, unless you've got something, John, okay?
I don't believe that's true. I believe the money came from the unallocated fund balance in the sewer treatment plant. I believe it was cash that we used. The reason why we're doing the rate study is because we need to fix pipes or examine fixing pipes, and because we need to rebuild the reserve from that.
Thank you, Steve. John, anything to say? Okay, we're going to move on. One quick point of clarification, there's been a couple of people who have texted in questions about EEF, and I think they're good questions, but they've cut off, because there's a limit to how many words you can use, which I don't exactly know what the limit is. I apologize for that. But if you could ask your question again about EEF and make it as short as possible, that would be lovely. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on here. Rita, I've got a question for you. This is a question about infrastructure, but also about cutting, potentially cutting taxes. So, the question for Rita says, "You have stated on numerous occasions that we need to fix our infrastructure, but you've also stated that we need to cut 10% in a couple of different tax areas." So, I don't know how true that statement is. You may disagree with the premise, but I'd love for you to speak on a minute about how we would both improve infrastructure and how we would also cut taxes.
Okay, and if I remember correctly, the only thing I asked staff to do was to look at cutting, spending 5% across the board in approving the budget. That doesn't mean that we're going to cut in every area, and part of the reason I wanted to cut taxes by five, or cut the budget by 5% is so that there would be more money to spend on the infrastructure. And can you tell me what the second part of the question was?
I think you're getting at it. So, are you saying that you would like to cut the budget overall, and therefore, the surplus of that would go towards infrastructure?
Infrastructure, yes. Yes, so, can you repeat the original question?
Sure. You have stated on numerous occasions that we need to fix our infrastructure, but you've also stated that we need to cut 10% across the board.
Okay, so, I didn't, I never said that we needed to cut 10% across the board. I did ask city staff to try and cut back in each department 5%. So, because I do think we need to put more money towards infrastructure.
Thank you. John, did you have a response to that?
Yeah, it's actually more of a question. I'm curious as to where you want them to cut from in those departments. What is it that you expect to be cut in order to reach a 5% number so that we can put in infrastructure?
Well, the truth is, 5% was just a goal. I mean, I've talked to people who have worked for big companies where they were challenged every year, the directors were challenged to cut 5%. It's really not up to me to tell them where, because city staff are the experts in knowing about where we can cut, and we need to prioritize. We need to make sure life and safety and, you know, every city needs water, sewer, police, fire, and roads and bridges, and we are spending things on things that we don't absolutely have to have, so I think we need to prioritize the things that we have to have and make sure they're taken care of.
Thank you, Rita. John, I'm going to come back to you with a question on your question. Steve, you can go ahead and respond to that. You have a minute.
City spends money on all kinds of things, but one of the challenges that we've had is figuring out what philosophy we want to apply to the budget on a year-to-year basis. The budget is developed on an annual basis by projecting revenues and projecting expenditures. It is impossible to accurately project revenues from year to year. I did some numbers. What I did was, I wanted to make sure I had the right numbers, so I took numbers from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is audited, and I compared them. The most recent Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from 2018 shows that in that year, we had a $6.6 million surplus. The 2019 budget came up, and there was $3.1 million planned to be transferred to the Capital Improvements Fund, and Rita voted no on that budget, because she said it wasn't balanced. We were spending $3.1 million that we weren't taking in that year, but that $3.1 million was part of the $6.6 million in the previous year's surplus. So, we should spend the money that we take in.
Rita, you may respond to that. You have one minute, and then I'm going to John. I'm committed.
I voted no on that budget, had nothing to do with $3.1 million. We were spending more than we were taking in, and so that is, that is an untrue characterization. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. We're going to move on, still on the same, in the same vein, and if the two of you want to continue to respond, that's fine. John, I want to ask you a question about what you would do one year, within one year of election, if you were elected into city council, what, how would you pay for improved infrastructure? What would you do?
So, first off, I would ask our city staff to find every possible grant that they can from the federal and state governments, and then I would ask the citizens to vote on whether or not they want to raise certain taxes in order to cover the cost of the infrastructure so that we can live in a city that's safe. The unfortunate reality is that we can either arbitrarily raise your fees, or we can ask you to tell us how much you're willing to give us in taxes in order for us to pay for this, this infrastructure update. At the end of the day, it's going to cost money, and we're going to have to spend that money. I would prefer that the citizens decide how much money they're willing to give us in order to do that. I believe in citizen consent. I believe in co-governance, and I think it's really important for us to ask you guys. But you also, I think, want this infrastructure updated. I don't think that any of you wants to live in a place where people drown because of two inches of rain, so I trust you.
And if, for some reason, the answer is zero from the citizens of Inglewood, we would like a zero increase in taxes, how do you pay for an improved infrastructure citywide?
I become unpopular, and we raise fees.
Does the city council have the ability to unilaterally raise taxes without a vote from the citizens?
Not taxes, but fees.
Fees, thank you. Steve, would you like to respond to that?
So, I'd like to talk momentarily about the 2020 budget, which passed on first reading on Monday unanimously, 6 to 0. Sherwink was absent. The 2020 budget proposes about $53 million in revenues into the general fund and about $53 million in expenditures out of the general fund, and it leaves an estimated year-end fund balance of $19.2 million. That is $19.2 million in cash that the city of Inglewood is sitting on, that only a portion of that is reserves. We have a reserve policy that says we hold $16.7 million of each year's expenditures in reserve. That's two months of operating expenses. So, if you take that $16.7 reserve off of that 19 or so million dollars, you get about $10 million left, or 19% of the total budget. $3 million of that will be transferred as a loan to the Stormwater Fund to be paid back, which leaves $7.3 million in cash with no purpose whatsoever.
Thank you. We're going to move over to EEF now. No one has submitted a shorter question, so I'm going to hodgepodge my own here. I'm going to do something similar to what I did with the biogas, okay? So, this is a first-come, first-served. My question first is, if somebody could spend 30 seconds or so explaining to us what the EEF audit was, okay? And then, if you could speak a little bit to the fact that, according to this question at least, it proved a lack of oversight and responsibility of city funds. What does that mean for our city? Okay? So, somebody could explain what the EEF audit was and tell us how the findings affect us. What does that mean for us? Rita? Take it away.
The EEF audit was supposed to be a forensic audit, where the auditor was looking for fraud and embezzlement. According to the draft copy of the report, we did not get a forensic audit. We got a performance audit, which is incredibly disappointing, because we had three auditors come and interview with all of city council. All three auditors said, "You need a forensic audit." And yet, the one that we hired, which I feel was the best, we unanimously chose them, they didn't follow through on what they promised to do. What that means for the city, I don't know. I believe on the 21st, the study session on the 21st... I believe on the 21st, the study session on the 21st, city council will be talking about this draft report. And I, for one, am very upset. If we paid $71,000 for a forensic audit and we got what we got, somebody needs to be in trouble, whether it's the auditor or whether it is somebody on city staff. But the truth is, we don't have all the information yet. The performance audit showed that our processes were set up so that embezzlement or fraud or anything could take place. We have to change our processes. We knew that before we ever asked for this audit. And so, the fact that, I believe that you citizens and we on council have been let down because of the findings of the EEF audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. John, I want to go to you with the same question. In your mind, what, how does the findings of the EEF audit affect us as a city?
That is a very complicated question that I'm going to try to give a very short answer to. I actually agree with Rita in large part on this, that we need to tighten up the way that we're tracking our money and spending our money and who has access to it, and especially when it comes to emergency situations. Honestly, that's about the best answer I can give you right now because I'm still trying to fully comprehend the audit, just to be totally upfront and honest.
Thank you, John. Steve, the question goes to you. In your mind, how does the results of the EEF audit affect us as a city?
So, keep me straight on time here, Nathan.
Yeah, I'll get you. Don't worry.
So, let me lay some groundwork here for folks who are not familiar with EEF. EEF is the Inglewood Environmental Foundation. They were established about 20 years ago as a holding company to hold city property in the city center area. They were established for a number of reasons. One of them was to protect the city from potential legal liability, a purpose I do not believe is fulfilled by EEF. Second was to basically avoid the requirements of Tabor to go to the citizens before you could draw bonds. EEF holds the certificates of participation and the deeds to the land. The city pays EEF for occupying the city property and for maintenance of that property. So, it's supposed to be an arms-length transaction, but everything is coming through the city. Essentially, it's a phony veil that was erected to protect the city or to avoid controls. Regarding the EEF audit, the auditor says they conducted a forensic audit. I read the draft. The auditor actually recommended that they be engaged to do a performance audit. The auditor made several recommendations for controls. I think they're valid recommendations. But I also think the EEF audit was looking for evidence of past misconduct that had already been investigated by the district attorney's office. We had already reached a conclusion. None of the activity was prosecutable. There's very little found on the EEF audit that would be worthy of the expense that we paid the auditor, from what I understand, around $50,000 to perform the EEF audit.
Thank you very much. All right.
Very little, very little. $10,000 found in a $50,000 report.
Thank you, Steve. Rita, go ahead and answer. Thank you. Please text in your question if you have one. Rita, go ahead.
The, I agree with most of what Steve said. At the very end, actually, I was distracted by the back and forth. But, oh, the district attorney's office never did a forensic audit. They never looked into anything. The report that the DA's office got was nothing more than a sexual harassment report that was turned over to the DA, where many of the city employees told the DA's office that there were problems with EEF and that money was being embezzled with, from the city. They never looked at any of the finances from that. And the truth is, the report sat on the DA's office for, they got it in January of 2016. It sat on their desk until April of 2017, while the statute of limitations disappeared on that. So, I just would refute that the DA's office looked at it. No, they did not. They looked at a sexual harassment report.
Thank you, Rita. Steve, did you have anything to say to that?
That may very well be the case, but I read the district attorney's report, and the conclusion, as I recall, says something along the lines of, to the extent that there was any financial misconduct, the statute of limitations has expired. The district attorney weighed in on financial misconduct in that report.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and rip through three more questions. We're going to shift gears away from that. Thank you very much for your responses to that, candidates. This question here is about property rights for owners in R2 zones. It goes like this, it's for all candidates. John, we'll start with you. How would you balance property rights of homeowners who live in R2 zones with concerns about development? You have two minutes.
So, I believe that the people that live here, that have invested in our community and our residents of our community should take primacy over outside interests. That means that redevelopment that's going to drastically increase people's property taxes, drastically increase property values in a way that's not good for our community because not all increase in value is good for our community. We should, we should be preventing that in any way we can because I don't think it's good for people. It's not going to become less expensive to live here anytime soon, but it's also not going to become less expensive if we double and triple the density on all of our neighborhood streets. It's not going to become less expensive if we build mini mansions in all of our neighborhoods. Those are not ways to provide affordable housing to working-class families. And I want to be able to stay living here, and I'm sure you do too.
Thank you, John. Steve, we're going to go to you next on that question. The question is, how would you balance property rights of homeowners who live in R2 zones with concerns about development? You have two minutes.
So, the city has a planning and zoning commission. It's made up of citizens like you and me who meet to discuss development issues. And those members of the planning and zoning commission advise council on changes to the planning and zoning code. Several years back, there were a number of changes made that resulted in some shock as construction occurred after those changes. I believe that there is a need for balance in the city. I want to ensure that there is opportunity for development, but I also want to ensure that residents who've been in Inglewood for a long time, or even people who bought because they liked the character of the neighborhoods, are able to have some security that there won't be these shocking across-the-board changes as all the houses adjacent to them get knocked down and replaced with larger structures that put their property in shadow. Balance is the key. We can consult the expert citizens who have volunteered for that in planning and zoning. Let's have the conversation again as a community. I support that.
Thank you. Rita, the question goes to you. The question is, sorry, scrolled past it. How do you balance property rights of homeowners who live in R2 zones with concerns about development?
The property rights in, in R2 zones, and actually, the, really, the property rights of all property owners in Inglewood are at risk. When we have allowed planned unit developments, they're really nothing more than an override of the zoning code. And I ran into somebody last week when I was campaigning who, she's on one of the boards and commissions, and she's leaving. And I said, well, can you tell me why? And she says, as long as this city is overriding the zoning laws that we paid for to protect our rights when we moved here 30 to 40 years ago, she said, I'm not going to stay here. And I do believe that it is council's responsibility, it is planning and zoning's responsibility to protect the property rights of the owners. Now, there are certain things that have been allowed in those different areas, like duplexes. And I would say that a lot of the people, especially in District One, where those, where the single-family homes are being scraped and massive duplexes or triplexes are being built, they're not against duplexes built in the character of the neighborhood. It is the massive size of the duplexes that are being built. And I, we could, council could resolve that problem by changing the bulk plane back to 12 feet instead of 17 feet.
Thank you, Rita. I appreciate the clear statement at the end there. We're going to move on to a question that's not quite a question, but I'm going to turn it into one. The statement at the top of this is, we need an Inglewood historic museum. And I would like to hear all the candidates reply to, in terms of their agreement with that statement, and how would you go about making that happen if you believed it to be true? There's really nothing to say if you disagree. So, John, we're going to start with you. Do you agree that we need that? And how would you go about making that happen if you agree?
I like the idea of having a historic museum for Inglewood, but I am much more in love with the idea of fixing our infrastructure right now.
Thank you very much. Rita, to you.
I, too, would support a historic museum in, in Inglewood. And the truth is, infrastructure is my number-one thing that we need to take care of. I agree with what John says about that. But I also know that the city is currently funding the Museum of Outdoor Arts to a huge amount of money. And so, I think that we could look at doing some things to protect our own history.
Thank you. Steve?
I think I mentioned earlier, we have about $7.3 million in the bank at the end of 2020, so if that's how you want to spend it, we can. There are massive problems with the infrastructure in Inglewood, and there are challenges going forward. A museum is nice to have. Stormwater pipes, essential. A functioning sewer system, essential. Police on the streets, essential. This would be something that could very well lend itself to a citizen effort. But there are two things we need to know ahead of time. First of all, how do we pay for it? If you want to use the city's cash, I guess we could. And how do we sustain it into the future? And that's probably the biggest thing. We're going to build a new project. Maybe we trade the Museum of Outdoor Arts for a historical museum? That's a possibility. But there is a lot of discussion that needs to take place. I'm always willing to come to the table for that type of discussion.
Thank you very much. This is going to be the last question that we're going to ask the candidates. You may use this as some sort of a closing statement if you'd like. Rita, we're going to begin with you, then to John, and then to Steve. The question is this. If you were not elected, what is the first thing you will do to serve our city?
Actually, I, I will continue being involved in our city because what I realized all those years that I didn't get involved, I really wasn't paying attention. And so, I, I will help in whatever way that I can. But I also know that there are times when former council members, former mayors, you know, get involved or are still involved on boards and commissions and things like that. I think there's a time when the people vote for someone else that it's time to move on to a different position. But also, I want to have any expertise that I gained during this time to be used for the benefit of the city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Rita. John, the question goes to you. If you were not elected in this particular cycle, what is the first thing you will do for our city?
So, the first thing that I will do is try to establish a permanent line of communication with council and start holding more town halls of my own with folks so that people can come together and try to facilitate conversation within the community that we can then bring as a community to council. I'm not going to stop being involved in my city. I've been involved in the community, even though it hasn't been directly with council for, you know, the entire time that I've lived here, and I'm not going to stop doing that. I'd like to get this program for the homeless off the ground to alleviate some of the pressure on our city services and our state services. And I'd like to really make sure that people are educated on the issues of, of our infrastructure. And I'd be willing to spend my own personal time going door-to-door to talk to people about that, even if it wasn't going to be something that I could vote on as a councilman.
Thank you, John. Steve, the question goes to you. If you're not elected, what is the first thing you'll do for our city?
I will continue to serve in the seat that I currently have on the Budget Advisory Committee. I will continue to work, as I have, on elevating the level of civic, civil discourse in our city. We need more citizens who are willing to come to meetings and participate even when they agree with what's happening. We see a lot of disagreement and strife at council meetings, and I think that discourages participation at times. So, those are the two things I will continue to do, to do to serve the city. I want to see the best Inglewood possible. I want to serve on the Budget Advisory Committee, and I want to continue my efforts to increase civility in the city.
Steve, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, in the interest of time, we're going to conclude the debate for now. My guess is there's a lot of things that you would have liked to have asked, or there's some clarification that you need. These candidates have made themselves available immediately afterwards, and then obviously through the course of their campaign to have these conversations with you. So, please take advantage of that. I want to ask you to do one thing before you leave, and that is to make sure that you're registered to vote and go vote, okay? This doesn't work, this whole idea of democracy, unless we get out and vote. So, vote, tell your family to vote, tell your friends to vote, tell your neighbors to vote. It's better if more people vote, so please get out and do that. I'd love for you to give a round of applause to the candidates for taking the time tonight to share with us.[1795.19][1795.19]